Forced and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced and create inequities among the people that we serve. Okay, and now we'll stand for the. If you would like.
Of the United States of America.
All right, so we'll move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. All in favor? And now to our amazing host.
Thank you so much.
Welcome you all. Thank you all for joining us here at Foster High School. We have a number of great programs, great things going on at Foster High School. So tonight, we're gonna highlight two programs. We have our Urban League Program, and we have two student speakers, as well as our CT Environmental Science Program. Big shout out to Joe Camacho, Chris Rossman over here for being the advisors for these programs. Y'all heard enough from me. I wanna make sure they get all the time they get, we all know three minutes each, so we'll start with the.
Quick little slideshow. When we break it up, I'll do a minute, a minute going on. So again, Chris Rossman, Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. And we got a next slide here. So this is our second school year here at Foster, and just our mission is just college career readiness programming for students of color here at Foster. So kind of go to the next slide. So just some of the things we do, we have our summer university program. Last summer, we had fifty students here for six weeks. This upcoming summer, we'll have seventy-five students. They're with us Monday through Friday for six weeks from nine to two thirty, just kind of engaged, preventing summer learning loss. Yeah, freshmen, a lot of freshmen in the program. We do STEM programming and college career readiness, along with a lot of other things. Weyowa is a government program in which we're working with thirty-seven students to make sure they're successful here in school and also after high school, so hooking them up with jobs and internships, et cetera. We do a lot of career exploration classes. We've done web design, hair braiding, coding boot camp, nail design. So these are all things my students have said they are interested in having here, so we brought that to the school. One of our staffs advises for the Black Student Union. They do tons of things like assembly. You'll see a picture here in a moment. Junior College Prep Wednesday, we're partnering with the College Career Center. Wednesdays after school, our juniors come and they work on their college, you know, miss applications, et cetera. We have bunch groups for young men and young ladies. We just had call signing day last week on Monday. You'll see a picture on the next slide. So again, we have a whole bunch of seniors come to the lunchroom to celebrate going to college. I mentioned the Black History Month Assembly put on by our BSU for the entire school population. Coding Boot Camp just wrapped up a couple of weeks ago. We had twenty-three kids that dedicated, you know, two days a week after school to come learn about coding, our web design, which I think, yeah, we'll talk about a little bit. Go to the next slide. Outside the school. Last year, we took the students in July to the University of Maryland for a week for a national everybody new leadership conference. We did a Black College Expo in Renton where Abby got accepted to about three schools on the spot. All right. New job there just a couple of weeks ago in Kent. Youth and Government. Last week, I seen Olympia. We brought some students where this is Khedja, the actual senate, our main herbial that she wrote here at Foster with four hundred other kids from around the state involved with the program. We'll go to the next slide. Some of the other talk about Olympia, Abby with her certificate of mission, DC National African American Museum. When we saw Hamilton, thanks to Mr. Plan Hook, so thank you guys, whoever made that possible. Although the next one, I'll start being quiet. We visit colleges. These are all the schools we visited during spring break, Smart Wednesdays, et cetera. We'll go to the next one. I can email this out to everybody. They want to take a look later to some of the colleges we've been at. Small taste, but the next one, so I want these guys to be able to talk. And upcoming next week, we have our Health and Wellness Summit where we'll have after-school Smart Wednesday. They're actually taking twenty students from the area, including about six foster students to Disneyland for grad night on Sunday, June fourth. This is all, everything we talked about, either pre to the kids or they actually get paid to come. So you talk, Willa wants to do a Juneteenth celebration like we did last year. Summer U I mentioned seventy-five kids. We're taking kids to Houston this year for the National Youth Leadership Summit. We got second place nationally last year, so we're, we need first place to share, so we're working on that now. And then Summer Mel is a new program we're gonna do for those college, our high school graduates to make sure they have everything they need as they go on to college. Speaking of soon to be graduates, it's Abby to share a little bit about what Urban League has been to her.
As Miss Rossman said, I'm Abby. I'm a senior here. My experience with Urban League has mainly been based around not only my education with answering questions that I basically didn't know. I personally come from a family where not many of the people went to college, so they were able to answer a lot of things and questions that I had that I probably would not have been told or still would not know. Along with that, they've been able to help me with financial resources, whether that's been with housing, food resources if I needed it, and along with school as well. And this has also provided several opportunities for me to get into schools, not just at the college expo that I have the opportunity to go to, but also with my amazing letter of rec from Mr. Rossman, I was able to get accepted probably into six or seven of my top schools that I personally feel that I really wanted to get into. So that was a big accomplishment for me. And along with that, I think that a lot of the young girls here kind of put their faith in one of the Urban League leaders, Miss Ashley. She's someone we can go to, along with Mr. Rossman as well. And also like with our workshops, the gray workshops, nails, and more, these are something that they can take into their future and that they all have told me and other people that they would like to possibly pursue a career in. So it helps them get that opportunity to learn that skill and gives them more of an insight on it. And I feel like Urban League has just been basically a great necessity to have in this school. Not only just for us as students, but also for staff members as well.
I mean, what's where you're going to?
And I'm going to Florida Memorial in August.
Wrapped up real quick. Hey, it was tough. I'm in tenth grade, and I first heard about Urban League last summer. Because I saw flyers going about the summer university, and there I met a lot of new people. And I learned about coding from someone that looks like me. His name was Liban. I went on field trips, went to UW. And we did a lot of fun stuff during summer. I also learned a lot of new things like coding. And we also did web design in winter. Liban was also there to teach us, and me and my group built a website for EGSA, Black Black Student Association in UW. And also in spring, I did a maritime adventure on school adventures. It's called, yeah, and we went on a sailor boat, like, it looks like a pirate ship, and we learned, we learned a lot about like how the sales were about the maritime industry, the sea life. And I also made a lot of new friends, and I also invited some of my own friends to join Urban League. And yeah.
That's a question. I'm curious, when you went down to Olympia, kind of what were the issues you were, folks were talking about then?
Khedja is a junior, she worked with Mr. Camacho. Mr. Camacho, you'll meet him in a minute. He's great. She's really involved with like environment gardening. So her bill was schools that are in a area designated food deserts that don't have like access to a lot of like great groceries. They'll be required to have as school guardians. So they learn how to guard in and like all the skills kind of that, and also like feed people and like learn how to do this in their own homes. So she was in the senate, it passed there, then it went to the youth house, it passed there, and then the youth governor signed it, so she looked at all that processing, that sign, it was four hundred other kids from around the state. And then I knew Hameen, who's our BSU president, and also came with us. Her bill was on currently law enforcement. They do a one-time racial profiling training when they're hired. But she lobbied to get it done yearly as like a refresher, so they always kind of learn about new things around like just what's going on around the country as far as the racial profiling law enforcement. And she got passed in the senate and then right before, like she was two bills away, it passed on Saturday when they closed at twelve thirty, but she probably would have got passed there, but we had a couple of other kids that were on the press, there were articles about this, everything going on. So that was our small delegation. A lot of them, we kind of left, took Willa for the first time. They're wearing suits and ties and ladies in the business attire. Some tying ties in the morning, making sure it was a little bit sharp. Yeah, so we're hoping to grow from like our five-person crew to, you know, a bigger group next year. Now we got that kind of planner and starter group.
So what, when, what was the date you were doing then?
May, so it's always the first week of May, the actual conference is on recess, and so this program kind of takes it over and just gets them all around the state come, and they're in the actual senate chambers, the house.
And so this is, is this live?
What's that?
Is this live?
I think YMCA helps run it. It's called Youth and Government. Their youth legislature program. And so kids like staying hotels during the week, but they're from Wednesday to Saturday. They're arguing their bills, debating with all the other kids from around the state. Another student we had, he wanted to change the state vegetable from the walla walla onion to a potato chips. Lost by one vote, but most of the kids in there were from walla walla. Curiously, they're. But yeah, it was a good experience.
Nice. Good job.
Actually, I have Mr. Camacho in our environmental science.
So hello everyone. I'm Miss Randy. I'm in eleventh grade. And I am in environmental science one. I would like to talk about two things that I've done this year. One is Envirathon with Environmental Science and Studies Club, and also some program that I'm going to participate in. So for Envirathon, we had to study four subjects: ecology, wildlife, soils, and forestry, which I was playing a big role on. We also had to do an oral presentation, and we all collaborated together. Where we had to team up together the week prior to the competition. And we basically forced all of our effort and made sure that we got everything done, right? We even practiced on the ride to the competition and right before the presentation itself. So that was really nerve-wracking, but we got finished. And as a result, we got second place in regionals and first place in forestry. So for the second thing that I want to talk about, it's the summer program that I'm going to be doing over the summer. It's in even New York and Hobart and Williamson, the colleges. And the program's name is Environmental Studies and Summer Youth Institute. Well, I'll be doing a series of lessons. And I was able to get into it because of the lessons that you take in environmental science and also that since I've been participating more and showing my passion for environmental science, I was able to get into the.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ash. I'm the twelfth grader. And I'm in Environmental Science Two, and because I'm in Environmental Science Two, I had to do a twenty-hour internship. I decided to go with Seapotential, which is an organization dedicated to taking teenage BIPOC students to the outdoors and learning more about the spiritual relationship between us and the earth. And some things that I did while I was in Seapotential were restoration work and canoeing. And the Seapotential team overall is very welcoming and very kind, very understanding. And a a something I found valuable from my experience was the ability to connect with fellow BIPOC students in nature. I found that very influential, very very nice and it takes experience. Yeah.
What school are you going to?
Oh, I'm going to Western Washington University in September.
Hi, my name is Jose, and I'm a junior, and I'm currently involved in the independent studies in environmental science. And as part of my project, I started a composting program. And the first week of collection, we collected fifty-eight gallons compost. And with all the materials that the city of Tukal provided for us, so the students can get an understanding of what could be composted or thrown out. And we have students help with collection and also be able to take the compost that we collect into the cars that are located by the school pool and and we're working, I'm currently working on presentations to do with all the environmental science classes in which I'll be teaching all the benefits of composting and a way to reduce our carbon footprint. And we're already seeing an increase of awareness of composting with our students, and hopefully next year we can see that grow more.
That's great.
That's all we have for our students. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for being here. All right, so we'll go to public comments on our agenda. There are a few ways with which to give public comment if you are here in person, and we like to do that. There's a sign-up sheet. Which there is no one on. And then if you are here virtually, you can either type your name in the chat or raise your hand using that Zoom function. Give folks just a second. All right, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on. As a reminder, there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting to provide a public comment if you would like. So we'll now move to the reports, beginning with the recent equity.
I'm gonna have Dr. Borshay. We'll each talk about one item, unless you identified another step or something that you have about that.
There is the one that has stepped up to do it, so I will check that. Good evening. President, members of the board, Dr. Harden, just to give you an update, yesterday we met to talk about the anti-racist summit. And some of the discussions that we had were designing a theme coming up, using the acronym either Imagine, Elevate, Dream, or Anti-Racist Summit, Decentering Whiteness. Or Imagine If. Some of the other themes that we've discussed will be defined as disrupt, dismantle, drain, and design. Or define, disrupt, and dismantling. Wanted to make sure that we also include culturally competency, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Making sure that we include student voices and having ongoing training with PUTSD, our equity leads and principals throughout the entire year. We wanted to make sure that this is not a one and done. We also talked about a call to action for the schools after the anti-racist summit. And making sure that we have it on a day where all staff will be invited, including our classified staff as well. This is going to be held on August thirtieth from nine to noon. And we had about twelve to thirteen staff members who were really, really excited about moving from theory to action as it relates to our equities. Racing Equity Summit.
Is that how many folks were involved in the committee?
Planning.
How many did you say?
About twelve to thirteen. Yeah.
Generally, most schools represent.
Yes. At least one from every school. Yeah, and so their call to action is taking it back to the school. And thinking about ways to make sure that everyone understands that the race and equity, or I should say the anti-racist summit is coming, and thinking about how they want to lean in. And again, one of the things that was really stressed was this can't be a one and done. We have to make sure that this is happening throughout the year.
We also were PSCSD consultants, a part of that conversation as well, our planning process, just because I know they
They were there.
A great understanding too.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So the other part one is a segue on that. We did myself and Dr. Borshay with our huge standard of ESD consultants last weekend. We're talking about what next year planning could look like. So part of that was going through the anti-racist summit. And the other was just to gather some more information about steps to take for next year. So that planning is still in process. At the same time that the planning for that was going on, I was meeting with the group, talking about the SRO and what we're looking at for possibly next year. So we had folks from high school and middle school and talking about, and police chief. Talking about what it might look like. The police chief did stress that they still are pretty low-staffed, so the maximum of what we have experienced for SROs in the past would not be something that they're gonna be able to support fully. However, much of the conversation was just talking about how to develop good relationships between police and students and police and staff. So that's probably gonna be the focus for what that looks like. So we're still working on that for the rest of this month and then hoping to bring something to the board first, or maybe in June that we can get out there. So those were the two items connected that we have on base equity, really three, because we're talking about the plan for next year as well.
Can you give us a little idea about what the students were saying in regard to the sorrow, kind of what they're looking for?
Yeah, basically, it was about how to establish good relationships with them. So one of the mentions was about having programs that are kind of unstructured. So one mention was there was a mention about doing jiu-jitsu, mentioning most students after school, because one of the SRO officers was good at jiu-jitsu. So there's opportunities like that, that could present good opportunities with connecting with students. So we're looking at more than just one of those to figure out what that might be, and it might be that you know, the SRO program is real about what happens kind of within the school day, but there are other officers that could be involved in those after-school activities. So that's what we're trying to figure out. But staffing is like a real issue for them that they're trying to look at.
Since staffing, they said it's official this year around, did he give, the chief, did he give like an estimate of how often the police officers would be at each school?
We don't know yet. Part of that is just depending, that's what we're gonna try and figure out, like, what is the actual in-school time look like? How much time could they afford to kind of prioritize with that? So that's part of what we're working out this month. Yeah, knowing that they're limited.
Any other questions? All right. Health updates.
All right, I have this from Miss Maestro. So two particular areas, one around COVID. So we have seen a decrease in caseloads since the week of April twenty-second. And I was checking the website today, so those were updated as of May eighth, which was them yesterday. And it looks like we have about one case currently that's out there. At least that's the data that we have on that. The other part of the COVID part is the Everly well, COVID tests, which are the PCR tests that you ship to a lab for results. Those will sunset July of twenty twenty-three. So if we, if you have a stock of these, you must send your sample by June thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So I think we have some of those in the buildings, but I think this is a general message to anybody who might have one of those tests, maybe personally. That sounds like that lab may be sunsetting in July twenty twenty-three, so. And the others around vaccine clinic. So the next vaccine clinic we have scheduled is June sixth, which is a Tuesday. That will be at Castlevue from three to five PM.
Questions there? All right. Legislative report.
Actually, I don't have any. You can take this one off the list since the legislature is over now, Debbie, but there is one thing I just wanted to say. So I applied to do a presentation on the funding system at the next Blas Daniel meeting, which is in Bellevue. And it's gonna be myself and David Knight, who's the professor in the University of Washington, has done a lot of work, and we're gonna get Dennis to do some research. He's gonna be taking a civics class next year as a senior, and so hopefully we can get him to do some research and a project on the funding system, and then all three of us could do a presentation at the, at the end of meeting. I think that there'll probably be, in the thirteen years, I've never seen a presentation done by a board member, a college professor, and a student or something. It should be interesting, and it'll be around the, how we need to change the funding system, so. That's it.
Okay, so just to our consent agenda. All in favor? All right, and then now to our questions only presentations. Let's have additional questions. Are you just gonna go down the online? Department updates, maintenance operations, capital projects.
So I have some questions on the, on the bond projects, how we're finishing up. So I was looking through the numbers and I, I'm not sure I could see. So we, there's some, some bond money that's hasn't been spent yet, correct? And the intention, we had two purposes for it. One was to do the show-off or pitch and upgrade, which is proceeding and yeah, and be completed this summer, I guess.
Correctly, for, I was, for September first. Yes, that's the intention.
And then the second one is the PAC upgrade. I'm trying to figure out from all these numbers exactly where we are on the, on the numbers. How much? See, how much? So first of all, I guess we've, we've gotten all the revenue that's gonna come in to this bond account from the bond and from the state matching funds, right? So we have the revenues there. How much do we actually have in that fund as of now? Yeah.
At this moment, for that, I would have to run a report. I had a conversation with Veronica on the algorithms. The, what I have in here in front of me, why I presented was the cost of the budget, the budget that we have, we have in place for the project. Now, the information that I received from Now, the information that I received from Veronica while we were preparing in these projects was that we had approximately 5.4. But I need to talk to her and give you that numbers, numbers to you, exact numbers that we have in that cap, in the cap, cap, or just.
Yeah, so I see the, so I see the PACs as estimated cost 5.4.
Correct.
But yeah, so the next question is, yeah, after we complete the kitchen project, how much is left?
That's correct, right. So we already, at this moment, we have contracted that contractor, which the numbers came lower on the construction side of the project.
For?
For that, for the kitchen.
For the kitchen, okay.
Right. So I'm going to be putting all those numbers together.
Okay.
And then I will be sending you an updated version.
Okay, so it, it looks like the new numbers you're saying were about yes, estimate. Is 1.3 million short in terms of being able to fully cover what the, what the PAC needs?
Yes.
Which we were hoping to get from the state.
Correct.
Do we, do we ever hear back why?
So far it's not very fine.
And so the recommendation here is to, is to wait and see if we get some money next year and hold off on the PAC actually.
We are, we're going to be holding on the PAC until, because probably the construction for next year. In the meantime, we're continuing with the design. And how, because all of that has, has been, we're already paying for that.
Okay.
So, but for the construction part, we are holding it at least for the next summer until we get more, more, more funds, until more funds are available.
There was the possibility of a federal grant to.
Yeah, I see that. So.
Right.
Okay, but it's good to have the exact numbers on your design so that when you're going to that, you can say, how much it's going to cost.
And I know the state likes to finish things quickly when they give you money. So if we're ready to go, yeah.
Yeah, so the sign is moving completely. And then until then, we're going to have, you'll see how much it's going to cost us, how much my revenue, more revenue we have. And then, then of course we'd have to make a decision depending on how much we have and then prioritize the project too as well.
Yeah, I guess I was.
If it is funds available.
I noticed that the, so the, it looks like the PAC project went up quite a bit from the original estimate. We got into.
Every year that we.
Details of, well, yeah.
And the construction cost, and I did already mention that the construction cost went up from last year to this year.
Yeah.
When we started in, in beginning of the designs before COVID to now, it's approximately 7% to 7% of increase in cost on all constructions. Materials are delayed. Another issue that we have is equipment too as well. All that is being delayed because of manufacturing issues, transportation issues, import, imports as well. So all that had taken now, taken a hit on, 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 on.
It also looked like some of the original ideas about, most of the cost of this is related to a lot of the electronics related to the lighting and the sound system and all of that. Which once we got into the details of it, was probably a little more than.
Yeah.
Originally. And so all these things, okay. So in the meantime, is the money, where is the money sitting?
In the, in the bonds, in the accounts.
In the King County.
Correct. Yeah, I'm sorry, Veronica, she can, oh, yeah, she's not here, but she can, right, but she can respond that question. It is in, in our accounts.
Which, which.
Could be generating interest.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering is.
Right.
Is that I've always been, that King County account generates almost like a bank level interest, which is almost nothing. And so the question is, are they, I don't think, my understanding is that we don't really have a choice there because the law says that we have to do that. But it's kind of maddening, particularly in the time when interest rates are going like this.
Right.
That we're sitting there. I'm curious, I'm very curious to pursue that issue with, and you know, that's kind of a case for King County. Can they do something better with that money than just have it sit there getting nothing? I don't know where they're putting it. Do we know where they're putting it?
I don't know that. I can track that down. But my guess is they also just kind of pulled in to be as safe and safe as possible.
Yeah.
So they don't return a lot.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I understand that.
100% risk and had access to that.
Yeah, I understand that, but there's ways anyway.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of one of the good discussion. But anyway. So, okay, yeah. And so maybe, yeah, waiting a year actually might. I don't know, some of the supply chain issues may clear up, they may not. We'll see. But anyway. Okay, so we're, so the plan is to, to go, you know, I mean, we need to sit down with David Hackney and get it going on with the state thing. And then at the same time, is there an application in for the federal dollars or?
Not yet. We had met with the last group that I met with, wanting to wait to see what the outcome was if we received any state. So we'll, we'll continue to pursue that though. I'll reconnect with them within the next week or two and see if we can set up a meeting about federal grants that they might know of.
And this cost, this 5.4, is this, does this cost true? Have we put that out for bid or is that just an estimate that the folks are giving us?
Estimate.
Oh, it's a yes. Okay, so it actually hasn't gone out for any RFP?
No, no, we have not. It can, correct. Yes, no, we, we have not gone at all.
Okay. And so, yeah, I would, I would like to hear what the, what the, what our current estimate on the differential is. 1.3 million plus or minus. So. And, okay, so there should be no problem getting the kitchen thing done. Okay.
No, that, that definitely, we are moving forward with that. And we are opening that kitchen September 5th.
And.
I'll be cooking.
So the question of the sound system and, you know, we had that issue with the sound system in the Showalter gym.
Right.
And you say that was.
That was an error. Yeah, it was an operator error.
Correctly.
Yes, so we actually, I visited the school right after we received the work order. And, and I went with a vendor there and we trained the PE teachers, Mr. and Mr. Christopher. And he was, and they need to also get some better microphones there.
Yeah.
But the school needs to purchase those.
Okay.
But the next, the next issue was the Showalter Commons, that, that system is really off.
Right.
So, yeah, that's the, that's what we're trying to do this summer.
And another issue I wanted to talk was, so you have on your list the playgrounds. So, so the playground for Castlevue is set for, to be done, I guess, next, next, not coming up summer, but the following one.
Correct.
So I heard from some third graders at Castlevue.
That program is in bad shape.
I mean.
That program is not.
They have some specific, they want, they want some slides and they want some swings. And I told them, please put that in writing and send it to us. And I was told that they would do that. I don't know. We haven't seen it yet. But anyway, I see that for your tech, or no, Thorn Dyke, you had a group that kind of got together and include students. Because students definitely will definitely have ideas on what to be.
Yes, it was really nice working with the students. It was first for me, working with the students and to hear their input.
Yeah.
We also had parents involve, the PTA parent or president was also present there. So it was really nice to hear from them.
And the other aspect there, I just want to, I was, I think you talked about was that there's a lot of schools that are working on playgrounds for disabled students so that they can participate in the, in the thing as well. So that's another, it sounds like that's going to be.
Yeah, it's inclusive, it's inclusive. So the sign will be that we have specialists, we build a special ground for them. The area where the special students will be, will be turf, so they can, and a special equipment just for them.
Right.
That we, that we're going to purchase and then set the other part will be also for, for the kids five to, five, five to, but five years, ten, eh, 10 years, 11 years? I'm sorry. Right, kindergarten to fifth grade. So you will be, will be able to use the playground at some time.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's like a general playground that they'll be able to.
Yes. Yeah, that's the, that's the main playground. Yeah.
Really excited to see those.
Yeah, the community has been asked for a new playground for a while now. So it's time to. Thank you.
Great accreditation status and policy adaptation. I haven't had the chance to really comb through all the feedback. Thank you so much, though, for providing us with that. So I may have some additional questions later on. Any other questions on this one?
Are we providing the principals with enough support for this? Because I, it was kind of added to their workload. I didn't realize when we brought it out that it would be such an addition to the, to the workload for them. And I felt bad about that.
You're correct. It is a lot of work and we do provide some time away from the building where we come together at central office to get the work done. Yeah.
And on the other hand, my, my understanding of this process is kind of like, do you have all the systems in place that you need to run a successful school? So it seems like that would be particularly for new, let's give it a new principles, that would be particularly beneficial for them. They can just go inventory through and, you know, here's what I need to.
To run a school.
Or not.
Well, and my understanding is that they also need to meet with their staff and have meetings with their staff to.
Yes.
And have we provided them enough time to do that and support? I just worry about those new principals.
Great question. So in terms of providing them with the time, I'm working with the timeline that Cognia has given us. And most of the time that they're using is cutting into their staff meeting time. But it's part of the school improvement work that all of the schools are doing. So it's not anything additional. It would be something that they are doing in terms of school improvement as well.
Does it take away the focus of what they might, might, would have been focusing on?
It may be an enhancement because in order for us to be accredited, there are certain things that we just need to have in place. And so it's all a part of the school improvement process. And it just informs us of some more things that we may need to do or that we're doing well.
And we'll get them lots of support you can get.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so they interviewed me as a board member and there, most of the questions are about what do you have in place?
In place, yeah.
Looking for certain things that are in place.
So do we have a timeline for when this process will be finished?
Sure. So our kind of accreditation is going to be done in 2024. And so we want to make sure that by 2024 that we are in place to make sure that there's no lapse in our accreditation. And this time we'll have accreditation for all five schools.
So what are the benefits of having all five schools?
Just help, just helping us make sure that all of the work that we are doing is contributing to increased student outcomes.
I think also consistency across the levels and seeing that K-12 have supporting.
Guaranteed and viable curriculum. Yeah.
I thought it was good. There's some publicity that could be done around that. I mean, we used to have, I can't remember what it was, the state had some recognition for schools. We could put in a banner, you know, in front of school or something like that, but we could probably do something off those signs.
Once it's all done.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think with, with, you know, just to resonate a little bit with what you're saying. I think, you know, ultimately it just comes down to ensuring that we have the district support for the admin, admin team, right? That is, you know, as we know, there's a lot that we're asking them to do as well, right? So on top of, and I totally understand also that this is just going to enhance, right? And is in many ways, you know, some of the great checklist or, you know, I think best practices, right? That, that should be in place.
And if a student goes from one school to the next, there's consistency from whichever school they go to.
Yeah. So, you know, I think I'm curious to insight, and then that's why I said I want to dig a little bit deeper in there. But you know, how are folks feeling about the support that they're getting? Or rather, just the, the environment that's being created around helping us all get where we want to be.
Where we need to be.
Right, yeah. Um, that's what I'm most curious about, I think, at the core, not to, anyways, this, the, the thing there as well. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The next one.
Questions on that one?
Do they have access to the data that was collected?
Sure, if, I, I will make sure you have access to it.
There is a link. Did you send it after?
But I'll make sure you have access.
Fine arts report.
So I'm going to just questions about kind of how in the arts reports, one of the things that came back was integrating arts into, you know, there was some recommendations about hire to new arts teachers, which we aren't going to afford at this point in time. However, I'm really interested in how we're kind of integrating them into our existing programs, which, because, you know, you can use the arts to teach math. You can use arts to see sign. I mean, you can use arts in all kinds of different ways. And in particular, our STEAM labs, you know, when we set those up, the A and STEAM is arts. And so the curriculum from Creative Learning Labs presumably includes some parts, components to it. I mean, in recent years, we, we focused kind of on coding and technology, which is great because we do that. But I'm just curious whether we have some, you know, I think you mentioned in here that there's some work on a, on a K-12 curriculum.
Yes.
Which hopefully some of that can kind of figure out how to maybe integrate some of the arts into areas that maybe we haven't done before, but can be part of the, the regular curriculum, if that makes sense?
It does make sense. And one of the things that we did this year with our coordinator was first of all, establish relationships and the fine arts program with the staff that were here. And so in doing that, one of the things we did was make sure that we have two performances. We had a fall and a spring performance. And so just establishing that as well as getting our curriculum maps. And now the next phase of it will be, let's see how we can integrate all of the things that we're doing and meet with other, you know, disciplines.
Right.
To do those things. But this year was more so just getting it reestablished.
Sure, yeah. And I know, having been with all the, the different music, I mean, music was just decimated during COVID. And, and I can see it now starting to come back, but you don't snap your fingers and it doesn't come back in a year. It's going to take several years to get it come back, which is, which is.
And you're doing a good job.
Yeah, they are. Yeah. And I'm particularly impressed with the, you know, the theater arts. She's doing a really.
Really good job. Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess that brings me to one of my other points. I wonder if we can do a little more, I mean, one of the, the things here is talking about interaction being faculty, community and so forth. So for example, for the, the drama performances, I think we have a huge pile of potential customers sitting in the Shag buildings.
Okay.
And not only that, but more importantly, they're voters. And so what I observed when I was out canvassing for voters, bobbies and so forth is if the older generation has contact with some, somebody in the younger generation, they will vote for them to be like that.
Okay.
And so if the degree to which we can, because I know, having watched their last performance, Boo, I mean, as an older person, I, I related to a lot of stuff that very clever. And so hopefully we can get some kind of establishment with, because I was looking at the Shag site. I mean, they have advanced coordinators, like they have a map, they have a, a calendar of all the things going on. And so hopefully we could get like our, you know, performances plugged into their calendars. It's probably not that hard to do that if we just had a contact with somebody up there and.
Weekend?
Yes, they do have this weekend.
Yeah.
This weekend.
And whether, you know, get the flyers on their, their community bulletin boards or whatever is going on up there. It seems like that, you know, making that connection is, is really important because, I mean, we want a lot, I mean, we're going to have a levy in the next year. So we want those people connected as much as possible. And it was interesting looking on their site, they also talked about intergenerational activities. Now, they didn't have any specifics. And so that's where we could, you know, I mean, the, the possibilities are literally endless for, you know, connecting somebody up there with one of our students. I mean, we have students, a lot of students that just really could benefit by just one-on-one connection with somebody. And so anyway, I hope we can kind of develop that and starting, probably starting with the arts and seeing if we can get, I know, I'm not sure what Radio Symphony does, but I was at one of their performances and they, there was a Shag van that was parked out in front of the back.
Okay.
You know, so they were obviously coming and, and I know Shag has, you know, they will take their folks to, you know, they, that one for us, they could walk. But presumably there's some folks that can't even walk a block or something. They even walk a block or something and they come in a van or whatever, and that's great. So anyway, I just, I just would like to see us develop that. You know, some connection with whoever it is up there. There's, I couldn't find the name of an events coordinator or something, but. Something up there that we can get our our publicity into and hopefully.
So even tutoring. Should I bust a chicken to Castlevue one day?
Well, or or with the other thing is reverse tutoring. So, you know, our kids could teach technology to them. And, you know, how many older people would love to be able to, you know, talk to their grandkids and that they can't figure out the technology or something? I mean, there's this, the the possibility, they're literally endless. And so, you know, and and some of our, I know Foster has service clubs at various times. I mean, it's just. On and on and on, but the but the more we can develop that that connection with folks up there, I mean, it's just going to be a win 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 for everything.
So we've had conversations, Ms. Martin and I, and we're going to be working on that to make that happen.
Perfect.
Okay, the first part for sure. Anything else?
Oh, I guess the only thing I was going to mention on the steam thing. I know we're, we've already done some of that connection. So the media arts, you know, in our elementary schools, for example, or, you know, they're doing the morning announcements, which is the media arts thing. And I know. We've had high school students of you just want to be able to, you know, produce music and stuff like that. So, I mean.
And they're producing the videos and things.
Yeah, yeah. And and we have all that. So anyway, I think I think we've, I think we're starting along that lines and just, yeah, keep going. So that's great. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. And then that brings us to the multilingual conference report.
Thank you for creating that.
That was a team effort. Yeah.
Think that's a good example of. You know, I think ways in which the board can be informed about all of these, you know, things that we send folks to. Way to really make sure that, not just that they're getting something out of it, but, you know, just they're being enriched by it or, you know.
And that we're aware of what they're being.
Yeah. So thank you.
You're welcome.
District attendance area report. Any questions on that? This I also really appreciate, still have a few more pages to dive into, it's a long report, but I think this. In addition to the last conversation, I think we have, just to give me a different perspective on, I think, just what the, what kind of conversation we should be having as well. About the decline in enrollment. You know, maybe it's less about increasing our enrollment and more of just utilizing. Just, you know, saying, here's where we are and figuring out how we can best support the students that we have. And obviously, we, you know, want to make sure that we're creating a great environment where we do move into our community, a great place to go. Anyway, so it's just giving me a little bit of a different perspective around just what the shift in the question is. Any, anything else there? Okay, so that brings us to our action items. We've got three action items for approval this evening. The first is the approval of the Human Resources Staffing Report. All in favor? Next is the approval of the Ford Budget Philosophy. I'm all in favor. And then the last is the approval of the out of state travel request for the N C C E B gear up annual conference in San Francisco, California. All in favor?
So I'm curious. This issue of the the difference between gear up and Abbott and how they work together or don't work together. I mean, they they sprout up. Can you give me a little more? They seem like they're a lot overlapping. And I don't know, maybe Mr. Martin, you have some insight into that.
So the gear program is certainly get to dedicated to supporting students coming from families traditionally not going to college. Do worse, still a lot of some of the programs that really does, we get additional credit from them as well.
Which is the same as Abbott.
Except Abbott, we have the classes that are focused on, you know, specific skills that you use and also doing.
Okay.
Doing the field trip side of things. So that's kind of where you see some crossover there. I hear people have worked with Abbott and actually supported some some programs and with app as well too. But, yes, I can see there's definitely crossover, but kind of separate stuff, more so outside support versus we have. In the building and classroom supports with Abbott.
So they they should be synergistic. I mean, they support each other basically.
Definitely, definitely. It's funny from gear up actually to pay for some Abbott tutors this year as well, so.
Okay, okay, that's great. I just want to make sure they weren't competing with each other. It sounds like they're in cooperation. Okay, perfect. That's it. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. And lastly, that brings us to our second opportunity for public comments. Again, if you are online, you would like to offer public comment, you can add your name in the chat or use that raise hand function. All right, seeing none, then we will move to insurance. I am shocked, less than.